This meeting is being recorded.
Don't know. Hot mic. Is JR just not going to attend anymore?
That's true.
He's actually taking vacation, which is really exciting.
It's making him on vacation.
Gotcha.
There's about four parks.
Yeah, he might have parked two blocks away, so you could say he walked. If he did the ballgame, he'd go two or three blocks away and say, well, I walked.
Okay, let's see. You guys ready? You guys ready? Welcome to the Thursday, September 11th Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. I am Chair Brian Fry. I would ask that you join me in a moment of silence for nine eleven. Thank you. I would also like to take a quick moment to remind the public that the women and men who serve on the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission are volunteers in service to their community. I'm grateful for all of your time and dedication. Thank you all. Also, I'd also like to let the public know and all of our applicants that your voices are heard at these meetings. No decisions by this body have been made ahead of time. So with that, please roll the opening announcements.
Before we begin the agenda, the Wichita Sedgwick County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission and the Wichita Sedgwick County Board of Zoning Appeals would like to take this opportunity to welcome everyone to this public hearing. For those in attendance, copies of the agenda for today's meeting, the public hearing procedure, and planning department staff reports on all agenda items are available in the lobby. The planning commissions and the BZAs bylaws limit the applicant on a zoning subdivision or variance application and his or her representatives to a total of ten minutes of speaking time at the start of the hearing on that item, plus up to two minutes at the conclusion of that hearing. All other persons wishing to speak on agenda items are limited to three minutes per person. However, if they feel that it is needed and justified, the chairman may extend these times by up to two minutes. All speakers are requested to state his or her name and address for the record when beginning to speak. When you are finished speaking, please share your name, address, and the case number on the sheet provided in the room. This will enable staff to notify you if there are any additional proceedings concerning that item. All speakers at the podium, please remove your face mask before speaking into the microphone. Please note that all written and visual materials you present to the commission and the board will be retained by the secretary as part of the official record. If you are not speaking, but you wish to be notified about future proceedings on a particular case, please provide your contact information to the planning department. The planning commission and the board are interested in hearing the views of all persons who wish to express themselves on all the agenda items. However, we ask that all speakers please be as courteous and concise as possible and avoid long repetitions of facts or opinions which have already been stated. For your information, the Wichita City Council has adopted a policy for all city zoning items. A copy of this policy is available from the planning staff. The city council relies on a written record of the planning commission hearings and does not conduct its own additional public hearings on these items. The decision of the BZA is final. Any appeal of a decision of the BZA is to the district court.
All right, our next item is roll call of members present.
Yes, sir. Fry.
Present.
Mater.
Here.
Dool.
Absent.
McKay.
Here.
Bill Johnson.
Here.
Hi.
Here.
Nix.
Here.
Clontz.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Joe Johnson is absent. Miles.
Present.
Zimbalman.
Here.
Aldridge.
Here.
Williams Bay is absent. Sure, sir, I show three members are absent and eleven members present.
Thank you, sir. Next item is the approval of the prior MAPC meeting minutes from August twenty eighth. I show that Commissioners Mater and Clontz were absent.
Move for rule.
We have a motion to approve by John McKay with a second by Commissioner Chuck Warren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Mater.
Okay, and we have two abstains, so it should be nine, two. Thank you. All right, next, we will go over, item one point four is determination of the MAPC consent items. These are items on the agenda that the board will be able to approve by consent if there's no public comment. First item is under subdivision. Item two point one, twenty twenty five dash three eight, has been deferred to September twenty fifth, so we will not hear that case today. Item two point two is subdivision twenty twenty five dash four two. This was deferred from August twenty eighth, so one step final plat for the Rafter Estates, West Twenty First Street North and North Four Hundred and Seventh Street West. Are there any members from the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item two point two to consent. Item two point two, vacation twenty twenty five dash three four. This is a request in the county for drainage utility easement approximately south one hundred and thirty first, one hundred and thirty fifth Street West and West Thirty Fifth Street South. Are there any members from the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members of the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item three point two to consent. Item three point two, vacation twenty twenty five dash three four. This is a request in the county for drainage utility easement approximately south one hundred and thirty first, one hundred and thirty fifth Street West and West Thirty Fifth Street South. Are there any members from the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item three point two to consent. Item three point three, vacation twenty twenty five dash three five. This is for a vacation request in the city for LC, roughly East Kellogg Drive and South Rock Road. Is there any members on the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item three point three to consent. Item three point four, vacation twenty twenty five dash three six. Vacation requests for fifteen foot interior setback for LC property within a CUP, roughly Thirty Seventh Street North and North Inwood Street. Are there any members from the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item three point four to consent. Item three point five, vacation twenty twenty five dash three seven. This is for utility easement on property located approximately east Twenty First Street North and north one hundred and fifty ninth Street East. Are there any members on the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members in the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item three point five to consent.
Mr. Chairman.
No. Approve item three point one, two, three, five.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Warren to approve all vacation items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right, now we'll have the public hearing items. Item four point one is a conditional use twenty twenty five dash one zero six to allow an accessory apartment in a rural residential roughly west Twenty First Street North and north two hundred and sixty third Street West. Are there any members from the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item four point one to consent. Item three point five, vacation twenty twenty five dash three seven. This is for utility easement on property located approximately east Twenty First Street North and north one hundred and fifty ninth Street East. Are there any members on the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item three point four to consent. Item three point five, vacation twenty twenty five dash three seven. This is for a vacation request in the city for LC, roughly East Kellogg Drive and South Rock Road. Is there any members on the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item three point two to consent. Item three point three, vacation twenty twenty five dash three five. This is for a vacation request in the city for LC, roughly East Kellogg Drive and South Rock Road. Is there any members on the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item three point three to consent. Item three point four, vacation twenty twenty five dash three six. Vacation requests for fifteen foot interior setback for LC property within a CUP, roughly Thirty Seventh Street North and North Inwood Street. Are there any members from the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item three point four to consent. Item three point five, vacation twenty twenty five dash three seven. This is for utility easement on property located approximately east Twenty First Street North and north one hundred and fifty ninth Street East. Are there any members on the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members in the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item three point five to consent.
Mr. Chairman.
No. Approve item three point one, two, three, five.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Warren to approve all vacation items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right, now we'll have the public hearing items. Item four point one is a conditional use twenty twenty five dash one zero six to allow an accessory apartment in a rural residential roughly west Twenty First Street North and north two hundred and sixty third Street West. Are there any members from the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item four point one to consent. Four point two is a PUD twenty twenty five dash one eight. This is an amendment to a PUD in the county, generally located at north one hundred and fifty first Street West and west Twenty First Street North. Are there any members from the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item four point two to consent. Item four point three, zone twenty twenty five dash three seven, a zone change request from LI to CBD, generally located west Douglas Avenue and south Seneca Street. Are there any members from the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item four point three to consent. Item four point four is a zone twenty twenty five dash three eight, a zone change request from B multifamily to LC, roughly north Hillside and east First Street North. The staff recommended action is to deny the LC, but to approve the GO. So with that being said, we will hear this case. So item four point four will be presented by staff. I need a motion.
Move that we approve public hearing items four one, four two, four three.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Aldridge.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Bill Johnson to approve four one, four two, and four three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we will recess to the Board of Zoning Appeals Agenda. So call to order the Board of Zoning Appeals Agenda for Thursday, September eleventh. The first item is to approve the prior BZA meeting minutes from August fourteenth, and I show Commissioners Johnson, Hi, and Warren were absent.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion through by Commissioner Miles with a second by Commissioner Zimbalman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, and abstentions recorded. Bill Johnson, Chuck Warren, and Doug Hi. So that gives us enough, right? Because we have eight. Okay. All right, first case is BZA twenty twenty five dash five four. This is a variance request in the city to allow, to eliminate landscaped street yard requirements on property in an LI, roughly at East Elm and North Emporia. Staff recommendation was to deny the request, and Brad is going to present the case.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioners, for the record, Brad Etherly, MAPD. We are discussing BZA twenty twenty five dash zero 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 five four today. This is a case where the applicant is requesting a variance to waive the landscaped street yard requirements on the west side of property zone LI, limited industrial. The site is located at five one five East Elm Street and is currently developed with a warehouse. The applicant has indicated that they would like to raise the existing building and expand the business to the south, which the applicants also own. The Wichita Landscape Ordinance seeks to protect residential developments from surrounding uses, soften harsh expanses of pavement, and screen undesirable views. The Wichita Landscape Code requires a landscaped street yard for all uses except single-family, two-family, and neighborhood swimming pools, which are adjacent to arterial streets designated in the Kansas Transportation Classification Map. The code states the intent of the landscaped street yard is to visually soften the masses of building and parking lots and to separate building areas from parking areas through the use of plantings. The code does provide an exception for development on collector streets with industrial zoning on both sides of the street. Additionally, the code requires a landscaped street yard when the value of the new addition renovation or redevelopment exceeds fifty percent of the value of the existing development, as determined by the county appraiser's office, or when there is more than a thirty percent increase of the gross floor area on the site. In this case, a landscaped street yard would be required because north Emporia Avenue is designated as an arterial street and not a collector street. The value of the redevelopment would exceed fifty percent of the value of the existing development, and the redevelopment would be more than a thirty percent increase of the current gross floor area of the site. The required amount of landscaped street yard is based off of the average lot depth of the site. Because the average lot depth of this site is one hundred and forty feet, the required square footage of landscaped street yard is, per linear foot of street frontage, is eight square feet. And below, or in the staff report, is a table showing how that's determined. Normally, in the LI zoning district, a front yard setback is listed at twenty feet, and this would be the subject, for this subject property, it would be along north Emporia Avenue. However, the UZC allows for an average front setback, which code states shall be the average setback of all lots on the same side of the street within the same block as the subject property. The applicant is choosing to use this provision for the proposed new building, which would result in a zero-foot setback. While this provision is acceptable, it does not exempt any property from required landscaped street yard if applicable. We've got the zoning map in front of us. Property to the north across east Elm Street is zoned LI and is developed multifamily dwellings. Properties to the east are zoned LI and are owned by the applicant and are developed with general offices. Property to the south is zoned LI, is owned by the applicant and is developed with a retail store. And then property to the west across north Emporia Avenue is zoned LI and is currently undeveloped. The site was plotted in eighteen sixty nine as part of J.P. Hilton's addition, and there are no other zoning cases associated with the site. Now going into the five criteria for granting a variance. Number one, their request is unique to this property and was not created by the applicant. The applicant states that the property is located along Emporia Avenue. There are three buildings in that block with zero setbacks. The owner wishes to align the addition with the existing building to the south to make full use of the property. Staff is not in agreement with the above statement. The landscape code's purpose is to require new development to conform to the code and order that in the future, as other development is taking place, a more attractive and visually softened aesthetic will take place within the city. Number two, the granting of the variance will not adversely affect the rights of the adjacent property owners or residents. The applicant states that the alignment with the existing buildings will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents, and once again, staff is not in agreement. Purposes of the Wichita Landscape Code are to screen undesirable views and break up large areas of screening or building massing to increase the attractiveness of development. The surrounding open space without landscaping in place will increase the visibility of the building mass when the goal is to increase attractiveness and soften the aesthetics. Number three, the strict application of the provisions of the code would constitute an unnecessary hardship on the applicant. The applicant states that the strict application of the code from which the variance is requested will result in a reduction in building area, which the owner badly needs at this time, and staff is not in agreement with that statement. According to the city's GIS map, the lot is one hundred feet in length by one hundred and forty feet in width, resulting in a total area of fourteen thousand square feet, and the total area of the required landscaped street yard is eight hundred square feet, leaving thirteen thousand two hundred square feet of buildable area notwithstanding required parking. And then additional square footage of building space can be provided on additional floors. Number four, the variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, general welfare, or harmonious development of the community. The applicant states that north Emporia is considered a major arterial street. If it were a collector street with the existing limited industrial zoning on both sides, we would be exempt from landscape. The effect on the public health, safety, morals, order, and convenience would be the same. Frontage alignment with the other three buildings on that side of the street seems to be more in harmony with existing buildings. Staff is not in agreement with the statement. North Emporia is not a collector street, therefore required landscaped street yard at the time of redevelopment when the value of the addition exceeds fifty percent of the value of the existing development, or there is more than thirty percent increase of the gross floor area on the site. And both of these conditions apply for the proposed redevelopment. Additionally, at such time as properties to the south or west are ever redeveloped under the same conditions, they would be required to adhere to the same requirements. And number five, the granting of the variance will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of the code. The applicant states that granting the variance desired will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of the code. Maintaining a consistent zero building setback along the whole block is arguably more harmonious and aesthetically pleasing than having the eight-foot strip of landscaping in that section. Once again, staff is not in agreement with the statement. The intent of the landscaped street yard is to visually soften the masses of those buildings. By definition, landscaping is required in order to make a property more aesthetically pleasing than a building mass against the property line, allowing no landscaping to be installed as opposed to the spirit and intent of the Wichita Landscape Code. So, in summary, if we can go to the sight pics before I do the summary. This is looking east into the site, at the existing building. This is looking south into the site from across Elm Street. Next picture. This is looking north away from the site across Elm. Next picture. This is looking east away from the site. Next picture. This is looking south away from the site. Next picture. This is looking west away from the site. And I think that might be the last picture. Yes. So, in conclusion, staff recommends that the request to waive landscaping requirements does not meet the five criteria required to grant the variance. However, should the board determine that all five conditions necessary to granting of the variance can be found, staff recommends one condition of approval that the site is to be developed in general conformance to the approved site plan. And with that, I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Brad. Does any members of the commission have questions for Brad? Saying none, thank you, sir. We'll now call the applicant or agent forward. Owner? Are they present? There we are. Thank you, sir. Please give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have 10 minutes.
All right. My name is Max Christensen. I'm the architect for the client of this property, the Nifty Nut House. And it doesn't look like I'm viewed very favorable in this attempt to expand his building and delete this landscaping in it. The thing I'm kind of curious about, if he reduced the building to 30% of the existing or less than 50% of the value of the existing, he would be allowed to do that. Is that my understanding?
Well, that's staff.
Yeah, that is correct. Yes, then we'd fall into one of those two exceptions, yes.
Yeah, okay. So if he were willing to do it in phases, you know, and reduce that down, would he later be allowed to have a second expansion if he did it in phases and eliminate that particular bit of landscaping?
So if I understand you correctly, you would do one addition now, and then at some point in the future do an additional addition.
Yeah, I mean, he may at some time decide that he's going to need that additional space.
Yeah, my understanding of the way the code is written is it applies to each building addition at the time of the addition. So if he does one addition now, that meets one of those two exceptions. And then further down the road, he does an additional addition, that meets one of those two exceptions. My understanding would be that, yes, he would not be required to do any landscaping.
Okay. All right. I mean, I really have nothing to add to the comments that have been made by the previous gentlemen, so unless you have questions.
Yeah, Mr. Christensen, were you given other ideas, like to rezone as a CBD, as a central business district, or anything along those lines?
No, no, I wasn't.
Okay. So that hasn't been something you've discussed with your client?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Commissioner Aldrich.
Yeah, I would just look into site plan, which you've already have landscaping shown on your site plan. So basically, what you're throwing out is that if you were to do this in phases and this site plan that was submitted wouldn't be any good, you'd have to redo the site But yeah, I think that if you looked at other alternatives, you might want to check into that there a little bit.
Anyone else?
Could we help the gentleman find out how to do that?
Well, the site plan he submitted was for this specific application. If he were to go and get a building permit for an addition that would conform to one of those two exceptions, his plans would have to be changed anyway for his construction drawings that show a building that's less than 30% of this existing square footage. So yeah, the site plan as it is now was just for the sake of this application.
Right. I think there's opportunity for you to visit with staff and come up with some alternatives. Because at this point, it seems overwhelming to find an agreement with your variance request. I'm only speaking for myself here. But I think there are other options that you could consider, that you could do on a separate application that would get you to where you need to be. I think you just need to sit with staff and hear them out, so. Anyone else? Mr. Warren.
Yes, I've got a question. The drawing, the site plan that we have, is that being in compliance with the staff position, or is this the applicant's desire to have it without the?
His site plan shows a desire to have a building that covers the entire parcel. It does indicate an area on the west side of the parcel that is hashanai, kind of blue-green color, that essentially says if he would have to remove that portion of the building or not build to that extent, because that's where the landscaping would have to go. So it's kind of accomplishing both and of the applicant's desired size of the building versus what the code would require, showing the limited size of the building if the landscaping is required.
Does he want to defer this? Because if he doesn't, you've got to go one way or the other.
Was that question to me?
Yes.
No, I mean, he was in hopes that we would get approval on eliminating the planting, and if it is denied, why, he may just go ahead and accept it. But he would really like to have that additional warehouse available to him and not make it smaller.
Yeah, hold on, we have a question by Commissioner Zimmelman, and then we'll go to staff.
One of the options offered by the staff was to go up with more stories to gain more space. Is that not an option in this case for you?
Well, he's at 32 feet right now, which is probably as high as you'd want to go and stack things, so.
Staff, Mr. Wadel.
Yes, sir. To the applicant, sir, I would just point out that it appears you've got a couple of options here. You can request a deferral from the podium in order to seek more time to discuss this with staff and maybe other people, and see if there are other options that you might be interested in pursuing. Or you can continue with this application right now and just see what the results are. I think that's been reiterated, but I just want to state that again, just to let you know that it appears you've got those two options right in front of you right now.
So a deferral, would it require additional time, I assume?
Yes, it would, sir. We would have to identify a date certain.
And resubmit?
No, sir. It would just simply continue this case, basically a pause on this case until it's heard again.
So I'd give you time to meet with staff and go over some other options. At our next meeting, I don't know if we'd be able to do it by our next meeting, which is two weeks from today. Would be able to put it on the agenda. So you'd have two weeks to meet with staff and go over some options. Did I see a raised hand over here? Commissioner Aldrich.
Yep, sir. I'm just going to say that I would encourage you to meet with staff to defer this. I think it would be to your benefit.
All right. I'll entertain that, definitely.
All right. Anything else from you, sir?
No.
All right, thank you. Any members from the public who would like to comment on this case? Saying none, we'll bring it back to the board. I make a motion that we defer the case until our next MAPC meeting.
Second. For the record, that's September 25th.
September 25th. Thank you. So the motion is second by Commissioner Aldrich to defer to September 25th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Mr. Warren?
I'll talk to you later.
Okay. Did I mess up? That's okay, you can put it on the record that I messed up.
Just an encouragement for the staff to help come up with a plan. For me, it seems to be a punishment to the owner to try to do something that's in line with how the buildings are now. These are older buildings that are close to the property, and to take one corner of this and require additional landscaping is, I think, is a detriment to good development. So it would be my hope that we could come up with something that everybody would agree to.
Thank you, sir. And we'll work on coming up with the menu of options, and then he can pick which one he prefers.
Right. Because there are more than one option here, so. All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay. Next item, so I will move to close the BZA. All in favor, or second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? BZA is closed. We now return to MAPC regular meeting, item 2.2. Yeah, 2.3, thank you. I had the wrong thing circled. Go ahead, Greg.
Morning, Greg, Chairman, Planning Staff. Here to present and give an update for Sunflower Grove addition. If you could go to the plat, please. The reason that this is being heard instead of on consent is because since they platted this 39th Street Court right here, the ordinance requires a street connection to unplanted property to the northwest and southwest, because those are unplanted property. The original request for waivers was from a street stub connection to unplanted property to the northwest and south. At the subdivision meeting, there was discussion about the need to provide the connection to the west. In case that gets developed in the future, there would be a connection to the west, and I believe that there's an existing access easement running right through there. So with that, the request from the requirement for a street stub to the west was stricken from the recommendation from the waiver. After discussion with the Public Works, they agreed to provide just a contingent street dedication instead of a complete street stub, which the ordinance requires. But since the subdivision committee only put in the recommendation the waiver from the north and the south, this has to be presented to the board for their approval of the addition of the waiver to not provide a complete street stub to the west, but instead of a contingent street right-of-way dedication.
I believe Mr. Wadel has a comment.
Yes, sir. Greg, as part of the staff presentation, you indicated that they were in agreement. I just want to make sure it's clear who they are. Is it the applicant and Cedric County Public Works are in agreement about?
Yes, the contingent. And Daniel Schrant from Public Works is here to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure it was clear.
Yep, and their agreement with just addition to the platters text that say that contingent right-of-way dedication shall become effective upon the plating of any adjacent subdivision having a street connection thereto. The cost of construction said street are to be borne by the persons or agency that owns said adjacent subdivision. So if a subdivision goes to the west there, a full street connection would have to be provided to that subdivision at that time.
Commissioner Aldrich.
Well, I guess my question is, when subdivision heard this, it was approved with the stub street. So now we're looking at, and the applicant and also traffic is good, we're just doing a contingent dedication, correct? So does this need to go back to subdivision, since they voted one way? And now we're looking at the planning commission to overrule basically the subdivision, or we're looking, can we do just an amendment? You know, I sort of like to hear from subdivision, see if they're fine with the change on this.
Okay. So Mr. Zimmelman indicated he'd defer to me, just to make a few comments real quickly. I would say that you have both options. The subdivision committee provides an advisory recommendation to the full MAPC. It's actually the full MAPC that takes the official action. So you can either, you can take action today and have it be different than what the recommendation is from the subdivision committee, or you can send it back to the subdivision committee for further review and analysis.
Commissioner Bill Johnson.
I guess my opinion is I'm fine with approving it today because they still got access to the lot. If it was something totally different, then I would say no, go back to subdivision.
Do you need to hear Mr. Johnson's comment again?
Yes, please.
Mr. Johnson.
Since they got access to the lot to the west in both cases, what we approved in subdivision, as well as what the county now has approved, I'm not opposed to approving it today rather than sending it back.
I would agree with that, yes.
Then I'm going to ask one of you gentlemen on the subdivision to make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the new approval of the?
Do we need to hear a public comment? Sorry, I jumped the gun. Do we need to hear from the applicant? See, you got me out of order now. I did. Please give us your name and address for the record. You'll have up to 10 minutes.
Good afternoon. Dan Garber, Garber Surveying Service, 544 West Douglas here in Wichita. And the 20-acre tract to the west was sold prior to the development of this subdivision plat, and it was granted a 40-foot excess easement, basically where 359th is, all the way through to the west line. So with this plat, they would continue, would have continued with their 40-foot excess easement, and lots two and three would have access from the cul-de-sac. So they would have their own 40-foot. And they would never be able to add more lots, except I guess two more, if that's a joint access easement at 40 feet wide. But with the requirement to make that a contingent right-of-way, that allows them to develop in the future. So really, I think we're improving that owner's situation. So it's like a gift to him, I guess. So we would hope it could be approved today. I stand for any questions. Greg did a good job in the presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Saying none, thank you, sir. Are there any members from the public who would like to comment on this case? Saying none, we'll return it back to the board. And now I would look to the subdivision committee to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd approve the new contingent dedication as was presented to today.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bill Johnson with a second by Commissioner Zimmelman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we move to item 4.4. And it's Christina's turn.
Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon, everyone. Christina, Replanning Staff, here to present Zone 2025-0038. The applicant for this case is requesting a zone change from B multifamily to LC limited commercial. It's a little bit under half an acre in size on the east side, north hillside, 250 feet north of East First Street North, that's 212 North Hillside, as you can see in aerial here. It's currently developed with a medical office building. Medical services are permitted by right in B zoning, and they are requesting this zone change in order to allow commercial development on site. LC zoning allows for more commercial uses than B zoning. They both allow for multifamily development up to 75.1 dwelling units per acre. The current and requested zoning is less restrictive than TF3 two-family residential dwelling. The current and requested zoning is less restrictive than TF3 two-family residential district. As you can see in the zoning map here, everything that is in yellow is TF3. So they shall remain subject to compatibility standards outlined in Section 4C of the Unified Zoning Code, as well as the provisions of the Wichita Landscape Code and screening requirements. I have a table here that demonstrates the development standards between each of the, the current zoning and the requested zoning. The character of the neighborhood is commercial on the arterial street and residential on the local streets. In 1887, the subject site was platted as part of the Morris Platt subdivision of College Hill. In 1985, the northern portion of the site was granted a variance to reduce the required front yard setback from 20 feet to zero feet for off-street parking purposes only. So when we look at the conformance of the plans and policies, this is kind of the reason we decided to recommend denial for LC and instead recommend approval for Geo General Office. So the requested zoning is in conformance with the Community Investments Plan. The Wichita Future Growth Concept Map identifies a site to be appropriate for new residential uses. So that's areas of land that likely will be developed or redeveloped with, with uses predominantly found in the residential category. However, pockets of major institutional and commercial uses will likely be developed within this area as well, based on market-driven factors. The locational guidelines of the Community Investments Plan state that neighborhoods serving retail and office uses and high-density residential uses can be appropriate along arterial streets and on small infill sites near residential uses if appropriate design features that limit traffic, noise, lighting, and adverse impacts on surrounding residential are provided on the scale and, and development that is appropriate for its context. So again, that's really an emphasis on neighborhoods serving retail and office uses, as well as high-density residential uses. There is still multifamily allowed in Geo zoning. The requested zone change is in conformance with the Wichita Places for People Plan. Strategy 3, so there's a list of strategies that help guide the community in their actions to create walkable places within Wichita. And Strategy 3 aims to improve the economic feasibility of commercial and service uses and the markets necessary to support them. However, the requested zoning is not in conformance with the 2025 College Hill Neighborhood Plan. This is the first zoning case that we're hearing with the newly adopted College Hill Neighborhood Plan. We look at the plan's future use land map, it identifies a site to be appropriate for mixed office uses. So that would be preferred uses in the mixed-use office category or a mix of pedestrian-oriented residential and office land uses. So LC zoning, it allows for offices by right and not in B zoning. However, based on the higher intensity uses permitted in the LC district, I mean, we're looking at vehicle repair, warehouse self-service storage. It's not deemed to be an appropriate zoning classification for this location. And so general office, we feel would be more appropriate. The College Hill locational guidelines, it also provides a list of most desirable land uses and least desirable land uses. So as I mentioned earlier, the requested LC zoning allows for some of the most desirable land uses, but it also allows for the least desirable land uses, such as vehicle repair and payday loan locations. The Land Use Compatibility Locational Guideline number five states least desirable land uses should be restricted to properties that currently permit the use by right. Changes, changes in zoning classification and approval conditional use permits that allow least desirable land uses are highly discouraged. So staff is recommending denial of limited commercial and approval of the general office. This recommendation is based on the Golden Rules, which are listed in your staff report. Should the MAPC find that the zone change be approved, we are actually recommending a protective overlay on the site, which is listed on pages four and five of your staff report. The applicant, they provided their own proposed protective overlay. This was submitted to you guys via email on Monday morning. And then on your tables here, there's a comparison table that shows what we are proposing for protective overlay and what the applicant is proposing for protective overlay, and as well as signage requirements on the second page. This went to the District Advisory Board on September 8th, and they recommended approval of the applicant-proposed protective overlay, which again is listed, was provided via email and is provided in the table in front of you. So let's go to some of the site photos here. This is looking east towards the site. I couldn't get a good picture from North Hillside. It's a little, it's a little tricky in that area. Next slide, please. This is looking south towards the site. Next slide, please. This is looking west towards the site. Next slide, please. This is looking north towards the site. So you can see the building, the existing building, question. Next slide, please. And just some of the surrounding context. This is looking west away from the site across North Hillside. Next slide, please. This is looking north away from the site. Next slide, please. This is looking east away from the site towards some of the residential area. Next slide, please. And this is looking south away from the site. That property is zoned LC and is developed with multifamily apartments. And with that, I will stand for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Just to be clear, the applicant's protective overlay request that is presented here today is the same one that was presented and approved at the DAB meeting?
That is correct. Thank you.
No changes?
Correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Aldrich.
Thank you. Do you, do you think that, that the application or the applicant's, the protective overlay and what they're wanting to do under the LC is in line with the College Hill plan? And also, do you, you know, looking at the two comparisons that we were given, do you think that the applicant's request is, is a fair compromise?
I haven't had the opportunity to discuss the protective overlay with management. I'm simply presenting the two. But I did, I will make a note that some of the uses that they are prohibiting, that the applicant is prohibiting, those are considered the, some of the least desirable land uses.
Thank you. Commissioner Mater.
I guess my primary thing is looking at the, which prohibited. The staff recommended prohibits drive-through restaurants. And with that residential immediately to the east of it, that would seem appropriate, that it not be allowed. But it's being accepted and recommended. Is that one of the issues that, that staff is looking at? Or why the only one wondering, wondering about that?
Yeah. So one of the concerns, one of the reasons that we provided it within the staff as a prohibited use and the staff recommended protective overlay is because of the potential light trespass onto the residential areas.
Also noise.
Noise, yes.
And I will say, just as an objective review of the applicant's protective overlay, they would like to have drive-throughs available. However, they would make it subject to site plan approval. And so my understanding, we can defer to the agent for the applicant to expound a little bit, is by making it subject to site plan approval, then it provides some level of administrative oversight when it comes to the orientation of a drive-through related to possible light trespass and noise from a drive-through speaker. So that was their response, that instead of a complete prohibition against them, the possible mitigating factor of a site plan approval.
I guess I don't really understand that because I, I have a business at 357 North Hillside. So I'm quite familiar with this area. And there's at least three drive-through restaurants in that area. There's Spangles, there's Taco, the Taco Shop, and there's a burger, burger place. So I, I don't, I guess I'm unclear.
Sir, I'm sorry, this is, you'll have your chance to speak in a minute.
I was raising my hand, sorry.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Or do we have an answer? Or is that, you didn't really ask an answer, you were just saying a concern?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I mean, really, everything along here is some sort of commercial. There's, I mean, yeah, there's residential that backs to it, but it's all, it's all commercial property of different sorts.
Mr. Wadel.
Sure, I can add some insights to that one. So the way that the neighborhood plan was developed, there was a steering committee of citizens who volunteered for looking over, and looking over the plan and the materials. And based on the feedback that was received and based on sitting down with staff and going through aerials of the area, they recommended, again, this mixed office kind of use here. I think that's predominantly because at this point, you, you see the veterinary clinic, you see the, the commercial that's on the corner up at Central and Hillside. But as you work your way down, you're not really seeing those intensive commercial uses, especially drive-throughs at this point. And so that's hence the recommendation for the office. I think for College Hill, part of the, part of the overall vision and goal for College Hill is to create a more walkable and pedestrian-friendly place, but acknowledging that these edges are going to be pretty busy and pretty vibrant with transactions and commercial activity. So I think they were trying to balance between acknowledgement that market forces are likely going to lead towards more commercial activity, but at the same time, trying to preserve opportunity, you know, walkability and pedestrian activity, so.
All right. No more questions for Christina. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll ask the applicant and/or agent to come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to 10 minutes.
Thank you. Kim Edgington, PSC Consulting, 2532 North Cardinal Drive, Wichita, Kansas. Thank you for the opportunity to kind of address some of these issues because this is a little bit of a trial run here with this being the first case under the new College Hill Neighborhood Plan. First, want to start by noting that the proposed protective overlay that we have submitted was actually more restrictive as far as uses than what staff had laid out in their alternative protective overlay. We did include more prohibited uses in there and really specifically honing in on what the College Hill Neighborhood Plan determined as the least desirable uses. We automatically eliminate, eliminate those with the protective overlay. The, the question of walkable places is kind of what has led us down the restaurant path. The neighborhood plan encourages walkable places. A smaller, less than 3,000-square-foot restaurant, we feel is appropriate there. And given the changing nature of restaurants and how they serve, you think about a Chipotle, yes, they have a drive-up window, but they don't have a speaker. It's, you do your mobile order and you pick it up. And so that was why we asked that staff then have the authority to look at and approve a site plan and make sure that it does work on this site. The, we also did notify all of the neighbors that are renter occupied, knowing that a, a good number of the notices went out to owners that don't live there. So we personally delivered notices to all of the renter-occupied housing, notifying them of this meeting date, the DAB, giving them our information. We did not receive any inquiries. I don't think that staff did either regarding those letters. But some of the uses, though, that we would be excluding under staff's recommendation for Geo are things that are entirely appropriate at this location, though. If you think about a barber shop or a nail salon, none of those things are allowed in Geo. So that was what led us to asking for this LC category because there are some fairly lesser intensive uses that aren't going to drive a lot of traffic, but that are appropriate at this site. There is a tenant in the building now. We are the contract, my client is a contract purchaser, though. And there's a very real possibility that that tenant will no longer remain in the building once this land transaction goes through. It has been a fairly difficult building to keep occupied. So we want to make sure that in the future, there is a very reasonable accommodation for some transitions. At the DAB meeting, the, one of the members there in attendance was Katie Brozek. And she was on the steering committee for the development of the College Hill Neighborhood Plan. She is the College Hill representative on the DAB. And she, in fact, was the member that made the motion to approve our proposed protective overlay with the acknowledgement that it was tailored just right for this piece of property, you know, that there may not be the exact right answer. But though we, as applicant, had worked with staff in addressing uses, site plan requirements, signage, that made this a really good workable compromise. The, and mentioning signage, staff had recommended that if there were the protective overlay, it would be limited to 32 square feet. We have asked for 100 square feet. That is less than what LC would allow. We've also asked that the height be lowered from 25 feet to 15 feet and that it be a monument-type sign. So we are certainly looking at a lesser size, lesser height for the signage there. Philip noted at the meeting that, at the DAB, that that would be similar to what a church would be allowed, even if it were in SF5 zoning. That, that's a reasonable amount of signage to consider, especially being along a very highly-traveled corridor such as this. With that, I will be glad to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Edgington. Any questions for the applicant? Saying, oh, yes, Mr. Warren.
Kim, the staff gave us an alternate wording if we were to approve your request. Have you read that?
I'm sorry, they gave what?
They gave us basically an alternate motion to make, to approve.
Right.
Some conditions. Have you read those conditions? Are you in agreement with that?
We have. And that was, in, in response to that, we submitted the applicant's proposed protective overlay. And that was the protective overlay that was reviewed and recommended for approval by the DAB, was our applicant-proposed overlay.
Thank you.
There were just a few tweaks that were a little bit different from what the staff had proposed versus what we proposed. And we are asking you to review it in light of our proposal.
Commissioner Mater.
Hi, Kim. Back to the drive-through restaurant.
Yes.
And so you're absolutely happy we're okay with eliminating speakers and that kind of ordering service?
I don't know that.
You would accept that?
I don't know that we would eliminate them, but staff would review the layout of how that process would work on the site. You know, we may have it so that there is a speaker on the south side of the building or the west side of the building that would, that staff would determine is appropriate or does work with the nearby residential. But that would be up to staff to approve. And likely, there won't be one.
So you're asking us to trust staff? We can go with that.
We are. We are, we are comfortable.
No Christmas present for Commissioner Mater from the staff.
No pressure, right? No pressure. You're going to get. Well, and I will point out that the specific language of the applicant's proposed overlay regarding the staff review was approval by the planning director and zoning administrator, which is the same level of authority and signature required for administrative adjustment that is detailed in the code. So it's not a planner 10 years from now who, you know, might be new to the department or something. It is the high-level planning director and zoning administrator.
We want to make sure that it works with the neighborhood as well.
All right, seeing no more questions. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
At this point, are there any members from the public who would like to comment on this item? You'll have up to three minutes. Give us your name and address for the record.
Name is Jack Patton. My address, 337 South Rutan, Wichita, Kansas. I'm also the president of the College Hill Neighborhood Association. And we've looked at this also, and let's face it, it's a commercial area. I mean, right now, I think we're looking more at, at bookkeeping, of getting everything in alignment. I guess there was three, two lots viewed one way and, and, but just, this is cleanup. We know it's probably never, ever going to go back to homes. It's established on a very, very busy street that even if you had a house, I wouldn't want to live there. And with the protective, this secondary protective overlay, we're comfortable with it. We'd rather have somebody using the, the property for. We'd rather have somebody using the property for something that the neighborhood could use. We do have an overlay, but it's an overlay. We have to look at realities and look at opportunities and look at the way things are set up right now. I don't, I have no illusions that we're going to bulldoze everything down there and put up big Victorian houses. So on one side, yes, it doesn't meet all the glitchy stuff, but in reality, it is what it is. And I think if we can make a better use of it, clean up all the language, and maybe they want to go in there and make offices and then put apartments on top of it, that would be great. But as far as I'm concerned, I'm good with it. And the board that we've talked to is, we're also in agreement with it. Just clean it up, and let's move on to something bigger and better. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you. Next speaker?
I know Mr. Hyde, so you better do your background checks.
It's too late, he's already on the board. Next speaker? Sir, did you have something you wanted to say, or are you good now?
Oh, sure.
Okay. I want to make sure you had the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you.
Just name and address for the record.
Yeah, Brett Gier. My address, 308 West Harry in Andover. I am the sales agent for this property at 212 North Hillside. And so I'm just learning a little bit more about this protective overlay. I, you know, was made aware that there might be an issue with going to the LC, given the Neighborhood Association and everything that happened, kind of timeline-wise. My point was going to be, you know, there is a drive-through restaurant, that Sport Burger is south of here, along this same road. North of this as well, that retail center, the plot of land just to the south of it, I heard that there's going to be a QSR going there as well, that that got approved. Same thing with residential on the back of it. So those are the points. I'm appreciative of the protective overlay and the work that's gone into that and all that discussion, so thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker? Seeing no other public speakers, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion. Commissioner Aldrich? Oh, yes. Kim, you don't have anything? See, I telepathically, I do. Bring it back to the board for discussion. Commissioner Aldrich.
Well, this is, you know, one of the cases that the applicant went above and beyond as far as notifications, first of all. And I thought that was pretty good, but the main thing that I like, and it's pretty plain text, that the site plan approved by the director, planning and zoning administrator, shall be required for any drive-through or pickup window service restaurant. What that does, it puts all the emphasis back on staff to make that judgment, whether whatever's going to happen, whether it's the speakers or extra, what do I want to say, barrier between the residential and the site on here. So, you know, again, it gives all the power back to staff on that. So I would like to go ahead and make a recommendation of approval of the limited commercial district, based on the comments that we've heard here, and also to adopt the applicant's proposed protective overlay for this area.
And you're using as the findings, the comments that we've heard today?
Yes.
What's your reasons for? Okay. And we have a second from Commissioner Mater.
I just want to clarify that I, I'm not in the notification area. I don't, do I need to abstain for any reason?
You got to hold it.
I don't think you need to abstain.
Okay. Just to be safe, right? Okay, we have a motion to approve the applicant's zoning with the protective overlay they've submitted, with the second by Commissioner Mater. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Before we close out, that is all of our cases. There is an advanced plans document at your table. Commissioner Aldrich would like to speak to it real quick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. During the advanced plans today, we were presented with public notification mailing to the property address as part of a unified zone change. And wanted to make sure, what staff was recommending, that we went ahead and proved and moved it forward to the full body of the MAPC. And we wanted to have time to make sure that all the commissioners had a time to look at this. So like, the biggest change that there was, was, in fact, the only change, was tied into the written notices section on this, which highlighted, and you should have copies. And you should have, on your copies, it should be highlighted right there that you can review. The other concerns, you know, that we had is that I think the county commission is going to probably wind up hearing this at some point, but we went ahead and deferred it to November, the 13th, I believe, our next, until that, to give this commission enough time to look at it, review it, see if they had any thoughts, any concerns. There were several questions that were brought up, was, you know, why this was even requested to begin with, and what benefit it would pose. But anyway, I just want you guys to understand why you have it, and, you know, to give you something else to read.
Thank you, Commissioner Aldrich. Seeing no other business, we are adjourned.